Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Present tonight are board members Mary Beth Burns, Beth McLennan, Clara Weinberg, and my name is Matt Rogers, the current chairman. Therefore, we do have a quorum. Also present from the city staff are Melissa Klotz and city attorney Ken Cox. This is a formal meeting and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most important, only one person speaks at a time to accurately record the proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. After hearing from the applicant or appellant, any person with illegal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please state your name and address and be sure to sign up on the provided sheet. We are audio and video recorded in this space. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you may be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. When all the testimony, evidence, and statements have been received into the record, the board will close the record and begin its deliberations. We usually try to adjourn by 11 o'clock. Any matter not concluded on tonight's meeting will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. We have four items on this evening's agenda, so I just want to make sure that everyone is here for those. Is the applicant for 1311 Elmwood Avenue present? 3110 Thayer Street, 2800 Central, and 2134 Wesley? Okay. With that, the first matter of our business is to approve our minutes from our October 15th meeting. Does anyone have any clarifications or corrections on the minutes? I did notice that with a quorum present, Chairman Summers called the meeting to order at 7:40, which was a little miraculous since she wasn't here. So, I only have that correction. If there are no other corrections, is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
I move that we adopt the ZBA minutes from October 15th with the correction as noted by Chairman Rogers.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I will note that Member Burns is not voting because she was not present at that meeting. But with the three votes, it is approved. Therefore, we will go ahead and begin the agenda for this evening, the first matter on our agenda being 1311 Elmwood Avenue. If you could please read that into the record.
Lisa and Julie Solar, property owners, apply for major zoning relief to retain two illegally located air conditioner condensing units. The applicants request to retain two air conditioner condensing units with the requested north side yard setback of .02 feet where a minimum 10-foot setback is required. Zoning Code Section 6469B3. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application submitted September 18th, 2013, applicant's letter to the Zoning Board of Appeals, affidavit in lieu of survey dated September 24th, 2010, anonymous complaint dated June 28th, 2013, notice of violation dated July 23rd, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, zoning ordinance, air conditioning equipment regulations, plot of survey dated September 10th, 2013, plot of survey of adjacent property at 1315 Elmwood Avenue dated April 9th, 2010, plot of survey with landscaped areas drawn in, potential compliant locations as assessed by city staff, images of property from applicant, applicant's letter to neighbors, neighbor responses, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and Spark draft meeting minutes of October 23rd, 2013.
Thank you. At this time, if I could have anyone who wishes to testify in this matter, please be sworn in. If you could just raise your right hand and repeat after our, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. If you could please come up to the lectern and give us your name and address, please.
Is that okay if I just set this to the side? Thanks. Good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Ashna Hansen. I am an attorney and I'm representing the applicants, Lisa and Julie Solar, for the subject property, the major variation request for 1311 Elmwood. If you still need my address, it's 2017 Seward. I'm also an Evanston resident.
Okay. Before you get started, let me just make a note that we were just handed a packet of information from the applicant. It appears to be a series of letters, additional questionnaires. There appears to be one, two, three, four, five, six, 11 pages with a title page, additional information for the Zoning Board of Appeals, being a photograph to scale of what the air conditioning condensers would look like in the side yard, graphic depiction of them, where the veggie garden is, as well as additional letter from Donna Zupansik. Is that correct? Zupansik, who's a licensed realtor, and then additional letters from neighbors of the 1300 block of Elmwood. We will mark that whole packet of information as applicant exhibit A. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, that's okay. Thank you.
Feel free to go ahead and begin your presentation.
So, I'm not going to, I'm going to not repeat everything that you have in your packet. I just wanted to highlight some major points. The applicants Lisa and Julie Solar, who are here, present in the hearing chambers, are requesting a major variance and they're seeking to keep an existing condition. They bought the house in 2010 and they bought it with the air conditioning, the two condensing units, in the place where they are now. And the variation that they're asking for is, there's approximately two inches setback for the two AC condensing units where the zoning ordinance requires 10 feet. And one of the pieces of information you have with your original packet is an affidavit from the prior owners that was given during the purchase of this home, which indicated that they knew of no zoning violations as they were selling the property to Julie and Lisa Solar. So, what I wanted to go over is that Spark and city staff recommended denial of this major variance, and the reason stated was because they felt the applicants had no, have no substantial hardship because there are other compliant locations on their property. And what I want to submit to this board is that there really are no other compliant locations. This is part of your packet. I guess I could mark it just for the record as I'm referring to it as applicant's exhibit since you already marked one as A.
Actually, if we already have it in our packet, you don't need to.
So, it's a picture. It's this picture. It's a view. It's marked of the, it's kind of a close-up of the two condensing units with some yellow arrows pointing and highlighting some of the things that are being shown. You can see two different fences in that picture. And let me know if you want me to, if I'm, if you're, okay. The one fenced, which is further in the picture, is kind of that newer cedar-looking fence that was erected this summer. The grayer fence was erected in 2011. And then you can see the two air conditioning units. You can see as well, it looks like a white, real thin line. It's actually a piece of string that Lisa Solar tied from property stakes when the property was surveyed to kind of give a better picture of where that property line falls and that that two-inch setback. I want to note that with regards to other compliant locations in your agenda packet, city staff agrees that the property, you also got this plot of survey with the highlight, I believe that was highlighted by city staff in terms of possible, or I'm sorry, potential compliant locations for the conditioner units highlighted in yellow. And city staff agrees in your information that it would not be feasible to relocate those two air conditioning condensing units in the rearmost 30 feet of the property due to the location of the detached garage and the loss of efficiency from those air conditioning condensing units. So, you can see in terms of north-south, the feet of the garage from the rear of the property, and that that 30 feet would extend further west into the property in between that wooden porch and the frame garage. So, that potential location really is not a feasible compliant location. There are two other areas that have been pointed out as possible compliant locations. One of them would be, if you're looking again at that plot of survey, it points out wooden steps in that rear yard right behind the wooden porch. And so, it's that highlighted area there, that corner there. And I submit to this board that that also is not a compliant location. In order to move these two air conditioning condensing units, in terms of the space that's needed to make sure they run efficiently, you need a 10-inch, a minimum 10-inch space in between them as well as around them. And the applicants have three children under the age of five. And to move these air conditioning condensing units in the space to which they enjoy their yard would entail them putting an enclosure around that air conditioning, those two condensing units, so that it wouldn't pose a safety hazard for their children. So, taking into account that enclosure and the 10-inch of space between the units as well as like a perimeter around those units, and this is based on the manuals in terms of the efficiency and proper placing and use of these condensing units, you're talking about a 52-inch space approximately that would be needed in that area. You also have, you have that picture as well of their rear yard, and there's like a toy play school car. This is the area that I'm talking about. The second space would be where the vegetable garden is, and that's also depicted in the picture that I'm referring to. And again, you'd need that 52-inch of space. In the, in the packet that you received tonight, applicant's exhibit A, Lisa Solar did a little mock-up of the wood porch and the inches that would be required at those two locations. And you can see the stairs come down, the width of that is 42 inches. So, moving the two conditioning, air conditioning, condensing units as well as the, putting an enclosure around it would make that stick out from those stairs approximately 10 inches. Putting them where the vegetable garden is would also make that stick out of their, where their door frame is, the orange door. It would come out to approximately four inches over. The other potential location is in the side yard. Again, you have a picture of that. And a better picture of it as well was given tonight in applicant's exhibit A. And a couple of things I just want to say about this space as well. This is their only yard. When you go down those wooden stairs from the wooden porch, it's just a few feet and then the garage is right there. It's a pervious space with brick pavers behind that wooden porch, between the wooden porch and the garage. And the side yard is the only grass area in terms of usable space for their family. Along that side of the house are three window wells, and because of the way those window wells are spaced, there's only one location that could possibly even fit these two air conditioning condensing units as well as an enclosure. And you can see that space, where that space would be in the picture that was given to you in applicant exhibit A.
Is that the area that is kind of mocked in with a black box? It looks like there's little interlocking pieces?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And that was to give you a visual of their yard there. I think it's important to note that no one from the City of Evanston, no city staff has been out to this property at any time in terms of being able to suggest that there are other compliant locations. No one's come out and measured. No one's been there to see where exactly this air conditioning condensing unit could go. And again, it's evident that the farther away you move it from the house, if there's even a location, and I submit there is not, you would lose the efficiency of those two air conditioning units. I want to also note in that side yard picture, the shrubbery to the, which would be the south, is actually church property. The next property to the south of this property is a church. And this is, right next to the church is an alley, and then you have a multifamily unit building right at the corner of Elmwood and Dumpster. And in terms of the side yard, and I believe the information in terms of feet, this is an unusual lot in the sense that it's a narrow lot. It's only 40 feet wide in terms of the whole space, not just the side yard that I'm talking about. So, based on that information, excuse me, that I'm, wanted to point out, again, there's no really other compliant location. And in terms of addressing the standards that you have to address tonight when you deliberate, your first standard to address is that the variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. And I submit that the answer to the standards is that it will not have that substantial effect. Again, this is an existing condition. Lisa and Julie Solar bought this property with those two units in place where it is now. They've done nothing to move it closer to their neighbor's yard at any point in time. And unbeknownst to them, when they bought this property, they believed it was compliant with any type of zoning based on the affidavit that's part of your packet. Again, in terms of use and enjoyment of adjoining properties, the neighbor to the north built that new fence that I pointed out, the one that's the grayer fence, in 2011. And my understanding is that there was a fence there prior to that. So, these air conditioning units have always been closed off from view from that neighbor. And at the time that they put up their fence in 2011, there were no complaints at that time of the diminished use and enjoyment of their property. So, I submit there is no substantial adverse impact on the adjoining neighbor. Number two is the whether or not it's keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. And it's clear in terms of air conditioning condensing units that the intent is to minimize or eliminate the noise that these units can cause. And that has not been an issue. In the Spark minutes, Chair Hallen addressed that, and noise was not the reason that this came before Spark or why the applicants were told that they had to apply for a major variation. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. Again, I mentioned the narrow lot, 40 feet, and that there are no other compliant locations. I won't go over all of that again. Number four is that the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty, distinguished from mere inconvenience. That would be the case here. You are talking about moving these two units that would need to be built on a concrete slab. And again, an enclosure would be necessary based on the family, the Solars that live there and their small children. The brick pavers would have to come up in the, in two of the spots by the wooden porch. They have built a substantial garden. It's not just timbers that you lay on the ground. It's anchored to the ground with steel rods. And you also have, if you're considering that there's potential in the side yard, again, you'd have something sticking out of the only green area in their yard in terms of playing with their children and their use of enjoyment of this property. There's some cost estimates that have been given in your packet as well, I believe. And the Solars have reached out to landscapers as well as getting estimates as to what it would cost to move this thing. And you're talking about anywhere from minimum 2,500 to 4,500 to do this. So, the cost, the loss of use and enjoyment of their space and decreased property value in the sense that if you put those, if you are suggesting, or not you so much as city staff is suggesting that a compliant location is in the side yard, you're taking away a lot of that livable space and would decrease their property value in terms of if they ever chose to sell their property at a future date. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income. There's no, nothing that would add to their income by this proposed variation. And number six, this difficulty or hardship was not created by them whatsoever. And I submit number seven is not applicable as, again, this is an existing condition. They're not asking to move it any closer to the property line. They're just asking that you approve the variance of this already existing condition. So, I submit all standards are met at this point and that there are no other compliant locations. I did want to point out that in past, the ZBA, in terms of looking at other properties with air conditioning condensing units that are not 10 feet from the side yard, there was a case just recently, it came before you, I believe on August 6th, 2013, 1724 Livingston Street, the requested side yard setback of three and a half feet for an air conditioning condensing unit was granted. Although, although in that case, there were other compliant locations that were discussed, the applicant argued that the west side of the property to which they were seeking the variation was the best option because there was a fence there, there was bushes there, screened it from view from neighbors. And that the other compliant location would reduce that applicant's use and enjoyment of their property. And based on the evidence presented in that case, which are similar arguments we're making here today, the ZBA granted that setback. 2230 Asbury Avenue, this was before the ZBA, July 5th, 2011. The request for, was for a side yard setback of two feet, eight inches, and that was granted. Sound was discussed at that, amongst the ZBA members at that time, and it was shown that there was landscaping that buffered that sound and that it would be a hardship for the property owner to put the air conditioning units elsewhere. And there was neighbor support for allowing the variation. 1033 Darrow Street, that was decided by ZBA, April 20th, 2010. And this is a little bit more similar because at that point, they were seeking a variation of an, again, already existing condition. And at that time, no other locations were discussed at all on this property. What was discussed was that it would be a substantial cost to move, and it was found that that would be a substantial hardship to the applicant and property owner, and the variance was approved, and that was for a setback of two feet. So, I just wanted to point those out just for you to consider as well that what the applicants for 1311 Elmwood are presenting to you today are in line with decisions that this board has already made. And at this time, Lisa Solar just wanted to make a few brief remarks, and I believe there are people here who want to do citizen comment with regards to this. So, I'll have a few closing remarks after that. Thank you.
Before you go away, do any of the board members have questions based on the presentation?
I do. So, I'd like clarification on the existing AC units.
Yes.
When you do the math across the property line, the distance between the house at that edge and the property line is 3.31 feet, and the, the wood porch extends out beyond that. So, the space that the condensers are in is actually less than three feet. So, I'm confused as to why in any of these schemes that you're presenting, you're saying you need, you know, a good foot and a half more than that, when they're in a current location that the clients, that your owners feel are efficient enough that they need now a foot and a half more space? Because if you take that same three foot, you can get it to fit in any of these spaces.
So, the additional approximately foot and a half
Yep.
... is in looking at the two air conditioning condensing units in terms of moving them and spacing them, those manuals indicate that there should be a 10-inch space minimum around those air conditioning condensing units. Right now, there is not 10, in order for them to run efficiently. Right now, there's not 10 inches between them. So, if you move them to make sure they run efficient, it would make sense if you're going to go through the cost of getting them moved to put them in the right spacing. The additional 10 inches is for an enclosure to go around it. The additional 10 inches is for an enclosure to go around it. And the enclosure would be, again, in terms of thinking of the safety concerns of their young children running around in this space. Right now, where the air conditioning, condensing units are, it's not a space where the children would even go in terms of its gravel. There's some natural barriers there. There's a tree that comes down that I went out to the property today to look at it, that I am not that tall, had to literally crouch under to get to the air conditioning, condensing units. So that additional space would account for the spacing between the units as well as around it to put that safety enclosure there for their children.
Thank you.
So what is the rough space that they are sitting in now, between the house to the neighbor's fence?
Less than 3 feet.
Yeah. It's, do you know, why don't you stand up?
Yeah.
And just identify yourself for that. Part of that discrepancy that you're seeing is that the units actually tuck underneath the porch. They extend underneath it. Is that what you're talking about? They actually don't fit in there. They go under the porch.
Okay. So what is the space then between the neighbor's fence and the air conditioning units as they currently are located?
It's a little bit off because their fence is slanted, but between 10 and 12 inches.
Okay. And is there any documentation as to when these were put in?
The fences?
No, I'm sorry, the air conditioning, condensing units.
No, there's no, city staff has done their due diligence, and there's no record of permitting. I think they can tell that one is newer than the other, and so it was, I think some of the information that you have in here says one might have been put in five years ago and the other one beyond that.
There are no service stickers on them? Service stickers on the furnace that tell you when they were installed?
Oh, when they were installed?
Mm-hmm.
On the furnace? Do you have those?
We don't have service stickers.
If you could state your name.
Julie Solar.
Sure.
We don't have service stickers, but what I have is like a bill of sale. And one bill of sale was from 1999, and the other one was 2009. So.
And you bought the house in what year?
October 2010.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I have one. Could you address, I've never seen an affidavit in lieu of survey. You might, Ms. Solar, you might be the one to come talk to me about this. So when you bought the house, instead of getting plats, you got this document.
So at the real estate closing, they did provide a survey, but the date of the survey, and this is going to be an approximate, was more than seven years old. So at that time, our lawyer, Stephen Bernstein, asked to have them furnish that so that we could try to ensure that the property lines that, you know, do change based on greenwood and dumpster, if there were any encroachments or setback violations at that time. And that's the impetus behind it.
Okay, thanks.
Did, excuse me, did that show one or other or both of the air conditioning, condensing units or not?
You mean the old?
On the plat of survey.
On the original plat that was presented, even though it was old?
No.
Okay.
It did show, like, a fence that was no longer existent. I mean, there were some physical features that had changed.
And the people you bought the house from, how long had they been in that house?
My understanding is approximately 14 years.
Who the people do work without permits?
And since the lien has been brought up, I have just a quick question for counsel. I've noticed that it technically was not signed by the people, but was signed by their attorney.
You mean the affidavit?
I'm sorry, the affidavit on the property in lieu of survey.
Sorry, I'm just going to get this in front of me. And for the record, Ken Cox from the City's Lot Department.
And just for the record, for--
I think it just means they give them power of attorney.
--real estate transactions.
I'm fully aware of that, but I'm just saying, we never know what attorneys say to their clients or don't say to their clients. So it could have just been signed by an attorney. I'm not accusing any attorneys of doing anything they shouldn't be doing.
Okay, thank you.
But I am saying that sometimes we know how this works.
This is a document with which I'm also unfamiliar, but based on Ms. Solar's description of what transpired during the closing, it would appear that both Byer and Solar were represented by counsel there and could have conferred with their clients presumably in order to discuss whether or not this was an appropriate document and may have signed on behalf of their clients, also to indicate, to record that both sides were in fact represented by counsel.
Okay, thank you.
Do you guys have a copy of that original plat? The plat you got at closing?
I don't.
All right, sorry to sort of interrupt.
The seller was in fact there.
Okay.
I don't know why she didn't sign, but it became, you know, kind of a to-do, like we had to figure out, well, what are we going to do now that we're at this closing? And it's an old survey. She was aware of it.
All right.
If Ms. Solar has--
Yes, I was going to say, if she would like to make her statement, then.
Lisa, do you want to?
And again, if you could just state your name for the record.
I'm Lisa Solar, one of the owners of 1311. The first thing I wanted to clear up is the space that they take up. If you look on the little detail that I did for you, let me know if you think anything in there is exaggerated. Here's how I calculated it. The larger units, 29 inches. The smaller units, something like 23 or 24. The manual for our air conditioner states that the very minimum airflow for any unit's got to be 10 inches. I realize that they're not ideal right now. They're actually too close to one another, though they do have 10 inches around on all the other sides. If you take them out of that location and reinstall them, and you put the 10 inches all the way around, and you put 20 inches between them so they each have their space, I don't necessarily feel like that's an egregious extra amount of space. Consider the enclosure, which we really have to have. We have two-year-old twins. They'll jab a stick in that fan faster than, I mean, it's got to have an enclosure. So I hope that helps clear up why it seems like we've gone from these two. You know, a lot of people have a condenser up against their house, and it looks rather tidy and fine. But if we're going to go through all the cost of being forced to move these, we're going to install them correctly and safely, and I think that's fair. So I hope that clears a little bit of that up. And then I just have a quick thing to say, which is, when we purchased this house, you know, you go in the side yard and you say, wow, this is a really small yard, but it's as much house as we can afford, it will do. You look around and you see what you want for your family, and it's a very narrow yard. And I don't know that that shows on the survey. But, you know, it may seem, looking on the survey, that there's a lot of room. But when Anjani came over, as soon as she walked out the back door, she went, oh, okay, yeah, this is, you know, I think if you're there in the yard itself, that's, the units in the enclosure would be really obtrusive in the side yard, and they would really diminish the way that we use the yard for our family. I also wanted to ask if you'll carefully consider the opinion of our neighbors, and not from a standpoint that they are personally, you know, supporting us because they like us or whatever. But it's a really good sample of, like, these are all people with a very similar income and similar lot sizes. Do they think $3,500 is a lot? Yes. They've seen our yard, they know our yard, it's similar to theirs. Would they like a 52-by-90-inch structure in the middle of what little space they have? No, it would be, you know, a lot more than a mere inconvenience. I think it definitely would qualify as a hardship in their eyes. So I just wanted you to look at that, not in the sense that it's, you know, personal support, but, you know, as other families that mirror the situation that we're in. And that's all. To that end, you do understand, though, that if one of your neighbors who doesn't have air conditioning now was to try and put air conditioning in now? Absolutely. They would be required to put it in their side yard? Sure. If we were applying for a variance because we were building a new house or putting an acre, you wouldn't see us here today. We wouldn't, you know, these have been here for years, they haven't bothered anyone. They were there before we moved in, before our neighbor moved in, three years of happy harmony. So, yeah, if we were putting them in now, one thing we would do, we'd buy smaller units. And, you know, we wouldn't be hoping for an exception to the current ordinance.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Solar? If not, is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this matter in support of this matter or in opposition of this matter? I see someone coming towards the microphone. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Sean Jones. I live at 1114 Monroe in Evanston. I am an attorney. I am representing the immediate neighbor, the neighbor most directly impacted by this, the neighbor upon which essentially these units sit on the property line. We've heard testimony already, it's only 2 inches. It's right on top of the line. On some surveys, it was over the line. The pad was. So this, there's only really one neighbor who is immediately impacted by this. That's Eric Palmer and Kelly Norton, who are right next door. I would submit that this really is not something that even should be asked for a variation here, this type of change in zoning. Zoning, once you get a variation, zoning, as you know, is forever. It's public record. This 2-inch off the property line will be there forever unless you put restrictions on it, which I would certainly hope there would be significant restrictions if it was even contemplated to allow something 2 inches off the property line. But when I say that I don't believe this should be here, I don't think you need to look any further than the purpose statement for the Variations Code. It's to relieve a particular hardship or practical difficulty that regulations of the zoning code, zoning ordinance, may impose upon a landowner because of a special or peculiar characteristic that make compliance with the zoning ordinance difficult or impossible. There is nothing special or peculiar about this lot. It's your standard Evanston 40-foot wide lot. Up and down this street, up and down every street in Evanston, you'll find lots this size. There's nothing peculiar about this. There's nothing unusual about this lot. It's the same as any other lot. If you were to grant this, you would have to issue, as you know, written findings that the variation satisfies all of the standards. No adverse impact on the neighbors is the first one. Well, representing the neighbor upon which this air conditioning unit sits right now on the property line, I can tell you there's serious adverse impact. As you've heard, one of these condenser units is old. We're talking 14, 15 years old. As you are also well aware, old units are loud. This is a very loud air conditioning unit. When it cranks on, it is difficult to have a conversation in the backyard right next door to it. There is a reason for a 10-foot setback on a side yard. Noise is the primary reason. This is right on the property line. When it kicks on, it's very, very loud. Second, the variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. I don't see how you could find that. The intent of the zoning ordinance is to keep air conditioning units away from neighbors because of noise issues, because of inconvenience, because of the fan blowing into the neighbor's yard, onto their rose bushes. I don't see how this fits with the intent of the zoning code. Number three, the hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to this property. Again, this is your standard Evanston lot. I don't see how this is peculiar. The hardship, particular hardship or practical difficulty is distinguished from a mere inconvenience. And what we've heard is inconvenience. Because they bought this home with these illegal air conditioning units, because they didn't get a survey, because they accepted an affidavit, they're now seeking to get a bonus, which means they get to keep more of their side yard than their neighbor's. They get to keep it because they didn't do their due diligence when buying, or they accepted a substitute for the due diligence. But now they want to keep it, and they want you to grant a major variation that will last with this property forever as a result. We've heard the mere inconvenience of moving a vegetable garden to a different location or to the side yard, which is the same place the neighbors have their air conditioning units up and down. We've heard the need to build an enclosure around these units, but first of all, these units are larger than need be. You can get smaller units, you can get quieter units. We haven't heard any effort to make these units quieter. We haven't heard any effort to accommodate anyone. They just want to keep things as they are so that they get the bonus of an illegally purchased, of a home with illegally placed air conditioning units. I don't think Standard 5 is applicable here. I believe that's for commercial properties or two flats. They're not seeking to gain an economic advantage. I will agree with that. Number six, the difficulty or hardship has not been created by a person having an interest in the property. Well, in this case, it was created, when it was created, by a person who had an interest in the property. The previous owners put these air conditioning units where they are without pulling a permit, without going to the city and asking where to put these. Then when the Solars bought this property, they didn't have a survey that showed that these units were illegally placed. Finally, least deviation among feasible options, I've touched upon this. There are plenty of places to put this. In your packet, you've seen the entire side yard is available. You've seen parts of the backyard that are available. There are places that these units can go. I would submit that most houses probably in this area don't have two air conditioning units. One is almost certainly sufficient. There is not the need for the massive enclosure around it. Most air conditioning units now don't have enclosures. You can see from the pictures, air conditioning units without enclosures. You can see that theirs currently does not have an enclosure. You can also see from the current placement that the 10 inches is anywhere close to met. They're 2 inches from the property line, and there's a neighbor's fence right there. But this really is the key document before you. Many, many places where these air conditioning units could go.
That's the plat of survey. People are trying to lean forward to see. So just for the record also, in case the cameras don't get it, that's the document you're referring to.
And the next page with the picture of the space available in the side yard. Now, while I understand and appreciate that there are neighbors here who are in support of this application, I would, again, point out the fact that there's only one neighbor who is directly impacted by this. Neighbors across the street don't really have a say or a dog in the fight. They just don't care where neighbors across the street air conditioning units are. But the one right next to it, where this very loud unit kicks on every time the thermostat tells it to, they're the ones impacted. They're the ones directly impacted. We've heard of other exceptions. None of these exceptions come anywhere near this 2-inch major variation. This is 2 inches. And again, in some surveys, it's even less than that. At some point, we would probably have to have a third survey, a different survey, to figure out where exactly this line is, since there's competing surveys at this time. In conclusion, I just don't believe that you can find these seven standards for a major variation being met in this case. And I, again, direct you to the purpose statement for variations. It's got to be unique and particular to the property, and it's just plain isn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the board members have questions for Mr. Jones?
Not right now.
All right. Anybody else wish to speak before I get back to Ms. Hanson in this matter? If not, Ms. Hanson, it's your time to-- time to rebut, give closing statements, however you want to work it.
I just wanted to rebut some statements that were made with regards to the variation. You know, in terms of the purpose statement of the zoning ordinance and the sentiment that this is not an unusual property, it's the same as many Evanston properties. And really, it's not. You have two property owners that bought the property with these air conditioning and condensing units at the setback that they're at right now. It's an existing condition, and that's what makes it unique. It's a forty-foot narrow lot. That's what makes it unique with a yard that's really a side yard to their house. It's not, they don't have a true backyard as most residents do in Evanston. So it's not the same. In terms of one of the last statements about the survey, a third survey being done, the survey that was completed by the Solars, the surveyor that did the work is the same surveyor that did the work for the neighbor when the fence was going to go in. So there's no competing surveyor here. It's the same exact person that did, surveyed thirteen-eleven, that did thirteen-fifteen.
And was, were his findings the same in both of those surveys?
Yes, he was not allowed, when he came to do the one for thirteen-eleven, he was not allowed on the property to, for thirteen-fifteen. But I think Lisa, did you want to?
In terms of where the property line is to the inch, after they had a survey done by that surveyor, they called him back to drive stakes along the length of the property to confirm it at any point, to be really accurate. He drove the stakes, they approved the stakes. We've all been using the stakes since then. There's rebar at the front, at the back. The line that I'm drawing that shows that it's, that is from their surveyor. He was there in person, and he confirmed that line. There's no encroachment. There's no other survey that shows an encroachment. You can just walk up to the line. Any one of you can see, that's the line their surveyor put up. So there was a pad under the air conditioning unit that we dug out, and it was encroaching less than a half an inch. So we cut it off. Encroachment.
All right, thank you.
There's no competing line.
Thank you.
And just to address the adverse impact characterized as serious with regards to the noise. Up until today, there's been no noise complaint from the neighbor to the immediate north. There was a three-on-one call in June, and there was no issue about a noise complaint at that point. It was an issue or thoughts of a fire hazard, which the Solars went to the Evanston Life Safety Services and said, could someone come out and tell us, is this a fire safety hazard? At which point they were told, you know, it doesn't even warrant anybody coming out. Air conditioning, condensing units are not fire safety hazards. So I find it interesting that now today, after Spark made note of the noise, that today you're all of a sudden hearing about a noise issue when the fence was put up in 2011, two years ago, there was no complaint of noise of that air conditioning, condensing unit. And in fact, there's a picture that was part of the exhibit that was given to you today, applicant's exhibit A. This is the neighbor's yard. You can see the air conditioning, condensing units there. My understanding is that these trees are recent, are new, but the gardens and the, I don't know what kind of plant that is, it might be a hydrangea bush, that larger bush was already there. So not only was there a fence there, but there was also landscaping. So the idea to bring it up in the eleventh hour, that now they have decided that it's adversely, seriously impacting the use and enjoyment of their property in terms of the noise is convenient at this point. In terms of whether this is a hardship or a mere inconvenience to the applicants, I think in this day and age, to say a couple thousand dollars is a mere inconvenience is is a luxury for someone. And most people do not find spending a couple of thousand dollars, again, for a condition that existed prior to them being in this property is not just a mere inconvenience. It is a substantial hardship. And to put on to the Solars what the previous owners did is also ridiculous, to hold them accountable for something someone else did before them without their knowledge. They did the best they could get, that they could do in terms of an old survey at closing for this house. And they got this affidavit relying on the attorneys that were present and representing them as well as the sellers at that point. There are no feasible options. Putting it in the side yard again would decrease the property value at thirteen-eleven Elmwood. And if that, if the property value for thirteen-eleven Elmwood decreases, so does the property values in the surrounding neighborhood. So again, in terms of the two units as well, just another note, the one unit is for, I'm told, energy efficiency, and the the other unit is for the second floor only. Is that correct?
It's a dual.
It's a dual. Okay. And so in closing, again, based on what I laid out for you previously, the applicants are seeking to keep an existing condition that was not created by them. I believe all standards have been met, as I've laid out for you. We're asking you to approve this major variation. And if you aren't inclined to completely approve it, I would ask as an alternative to approve it with conditions, maybe allow them to have a variation for two years. Give them the opportunity to have the time to move it. And with regards to the cost, the time to have the funds to move it and move it in a proper way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Since, at this point, we'll go ahead and close the record and begin our deliberation. We see these cases more often than I would like, where we find out that people have bought property and full disclosure has not been made. Quite often, it's with, oh, we always had that apartment in the basement. This is one of the first ones I remember that's an air conditioning condenser, but it's certainly not a unique situation. I mean, we get this regular.
Wasn't it last month or something that it was a whole second floor addition?
Right.
Built without a permit?
Right. And so what we have to do as a board is we have to look at the standards that are laid out for us in the in the zoning ordinance and determine to the best of our ability whether those standards are met, taking into account what the, what the owners know, knew, what they didn't know, whether they were supposed to know. It's one of the reasons that attorneys are involved in a lot of real estate closings is because you rely on them for their expertise as well as for real estate agents to do a lot of the due diligence, because individual people don't necessarily know. That, in my opinion, does not necessarily excuse the fact that existing conditions should be granted and continue on forever. Because what happens is there's never any correction for errors. And one of the things that we have to take into consideration is when things are brought to our attention, is it an opportunity for us to correct errors and make sure that they don't become permanent and never ending? With that said, I will ask any of the board members to give their thoughts, and then we will go through the standards to determine whether the standards have been met or not.
I feel like we've had this conversation recently. I'm empathetic to the situation. However, everybody's, there's been several comments regarding the intent of the zoning code. And the very first statement in the zoning code is to promote public health, safety, comfort, and morals, convenience, all sorts of other good stuff. So comfort is definitely a critical factor to this, and that being one part of it, the setbacks are also intended not only as a noise mitigator to facilitate comfort, but also as a way of fire safety. It's not necessarily that the condensers are an immediate fire hazard, but two structures are essentially capable of combusting. And so we want to create some sort of separation between them. And that's really the intent of these setbacks. When we live in multifamily homes or apartment buildings, there's one-hour separations between dwellings. Single-family homes don't have the requirement on the exterior walls. This is what the setbacks are required to do. The attorney for thirteen-eleven presented a lot of cases that we've reviewed recently. I don't remember any of those having the two-inch discrepancy, and I know I've taken a great deal of pause, particularly with the one recent one where we exactly deliberated the fact that somebody else would come down the line and have issues with noise.
And to that point, one of the things that we've always kind of considered is, number one, we, we never really rely on precedent. Because each property is different from any other property. And in the cases that were cited, most of those were a two-foot to three-foot setback. And quite often, the neighbor to that side has come and said, I support this.
Exactly.
This is the best place. I think it should go. And without having those cases in front of me to know exactly why we made the decision that we made, it's a little hard for me to say, oh, there were no other places for it, or there were other places for it, but we ruled those out for whatever reason.
Right, so exactly. You took me to where I was going, where that we had influence by the neighbors. It wasn't as tight as this condition. There were other mitigating circumstances. The other thing that I wanted to mention, you know, sort of along the lines of, we're all required to know our ordinances, the city's not required to go out and note to all of us whether our property's compliant or not. Just a quick note. Now, the other thing that's probably causing this to be even more egregious from a comfort standpoint to the adjacent neighbor is the fact that the fence is right there, and it's a hard surface, so it's reverberating, and it's creating even larger echo sound for us. So it's an older unit, right up next to the fence, being really loud. So in my mind, the big differentiator for this case is the fact that there is the neighbor next door coming to say that it's a problem.
Can I just interject there for a minute? I understand what you guys are saying. But I do want to point out that the neighbor has lived there for three years and never complained once about the placement, about the noise, never complained about the noise when he complained about the placement. And now, I do find it peculiar and distressing that what I believe that we're seeing here is a situation where neighbors have come to a disagreement, and one neighbor is actually seeking revenge on the other neighbor by putting in this complaint and by making sure that these people are going to have to move their air conditioners. I hear what you guys are saying, and I think I see the way this is going to go. But I would like to point out that noise was never a factor, apparently, for the entire three years.
Well, I would say.
We have absolutely no evidence before us that the complaining neighbor was upset about noise. None. We have no evidence presented.
I would say that the, the neighbor complaint has shifted its focus since Spark. I think that's a diplomatic way of putting it.
Do we not find that somewhat of note as well?
I do find, I do find that disturbing. But at the same time, the situation exists. Under whatever conditions it was brought to our attention, I feel that we must act to remedy it. Whether that's, whether that was a genuine or disingenuous complaint, whether it stemmed from some other disturbance argument that has arisen between neighbors, the fact is, the situation has landed before us. And the question before this board is, do we allow the situation to continue, to exist, or do we take the opportunity?
You're right, but we're being asked to settle a score. And that's what's going on right now, and I'm, I'm sorry that I'm going to have to be a part of it. I am.
All right. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, the only thing I want to add, aside from generally agreeing with both you and Clara and your comments, is you know, my position is always the minimum change necessary, right? And so I think that there are compliant locations. I think the side yard, although, again, it's not ideal for what the owners want, and it's not how the house was presented to them. There is a picture of the neighbor's house at thirteen-eleven with the same side yard setback. I mean, they had the same side yard. It's fifteen point nine-four feet-ish, and they.
Do you mean thirteen-fifteen?
Yes, sorry. Am I getting the neighbor, am I getting people mixed up?
This is thirteen-eleven.
Okay, so the neighbor's house. So the neighbor at thirteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, right? So they both generally have that same side yard of fifteen point nine-four feet. And the neighbors have their AC condenser in their side yard. And I would argue that from a, from a sales perspective and from a real estate value perspective, nobody would value those two homes differently based on the location of the AC condenser. The location of the AC condenser generally isn't a driving force in whether you choose to buy the house or not. Does it make things better? Do you like it more or less? Sure, but you buy the house for different reasons. So I'm not sure, so for me, that's not a compelling argument not to put it in a compliant location. However, here's what I'm going to say is there was an interesting idea proposed by the council, which is that we give them time to remedy the situation rather than impose it immediately. I'm, I'm leaning in that direction only because they didn't do this to themselves, right? This is somebody else's skirting around permit. And although they're going to take the hit for bringing it back into compliance with permit, it seems as though a little bit of lenience there is worth it to make it not so onerous.
I would agree with you.
I think that everybody on the board would agree with that. Is there any additional comment from any of the board members? If not, we'll go ahead and go through the standards.
Yeah.
Okay, so in order to make our decision, we, as I mentioned before, are held to seven standards that are listed in the zoning ordinance. Counsel for both the applicant and the the neighbor have gone through them, but now we get to go through them. Number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. This one is a little difficult to determine. If we had heard that noise was always a problem, I would be more sympathetic to the neighbor, but since noise kind of came up as an afterthought, I can't imagine that, having lived there for three years, all of a sudden, noise became an issue between the Spark meeting and tonight's meeting. So I would say that while there will be an impact on his use, I would not determine it to be substantially adverse. Standard number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. I believe that the zoning ordinance has outlined the way things would be in an ideal situation. What we have before us unfortunately is not an ideal situation, and so we're kind of retrofitting some things into it. But the intent of the zoning ordinance is to provide open space and living space. So on one hand, we have the not necessarily wanting to impede in a side yard that is part of the family's living space, but at the same time, wanting to keep the of the family's living space, but at the same time, wanting to keep the air conditioning condensers placed further away. And as I mentioned, quite often, we see that as a two-to-three-foot minimum as opposed to a two-inch, so I would feel that this one has not been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. The only peculiarity to this really is the fact that we have illegal air conditioning condenser units that were placed in, and through the sale of the home, somebody did not disclose something that should have been disclosed to the current owners. And the size of the property is not something that I feel is substantially unique. A 40-foot-wide lot is not uncommon in the city of Evanston. We often see lots that are much smaller and much more substandard. So I would say that this standard has not been met. The property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. I do believe that it would place a hardship on the property owner if we were to ask them to move this air conditioning condenser unit. However, it has been presented in information through the applicant's counsel, as well as been discussed on the board, granting some amount of time into which to remedy this so as not to impose a hardship that comes down immediately on the property owners, I think would definitely be within our purview and one of the conditions that would be acceptable to members of this board. So that one, I believe, has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income. I don't believe that this standard necessarily even applies in this matter. Having air conditioning is going to exist one way or another, and the property values that are on this property are going to remain substantial with the other properties along this area. I don't think that this necessarily comes into play. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. The people who currently own the property have not created any sort of a problem here in itself. The problem was created by the previous owners of the home, who obviously did work without permits, and if this case had come before the board as a major variation, saying, "This is where we would like to place the air conditioning condenser units," it would be immediately denied, I think, I could say so, by every member of this board. So I feel that that standard has been met. Number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the ZBA. And this is the one where I think we have kind of the greater disagreement. A number of locations have been identified. Are they ideal for this particular property owner? Not necessarily. But if this case came before us, like I mentioned, as a case today that had not any baggage, any issues before it, we would immediately identify those areas and say, "This is where it needs to go if you want to put an air conditioning condenser unit in. Two inches or three inches from the property line is never acceptable, in our opinion." So I feel that this standard has not been met. Does anybody disagree with me on any of the standards? So with that being said, I will entertain a motion on 1311 Elmwood Avenue.
Let's, one quick thing, I want to take advantage of our architects on the board. The main unit apparently was installed in 99, so we're coming up on 14 years. What's the lifespan of a-
Could go to 20.
Oh, okay.
Could not. It could break next year.
Okay.
You're in that-
Starting to get where it's kind of old, but we don't really know if it's on its last life. The reason I was asking is to sort of ascertain what's inappropriate, because if, you know, the time is long enough, maybe they're just going to replace with a smaller, quieter, more efficient unit.
Right.
So.
Do we have thoughts on how long we want that to be?
What duration do we want to give?
I mean, I'm open to, I mean, I would not make it a lengthy period of time.
Define lengthy.
I would say somewhere in the 12- to 18-month period would be what I would ideally like to see, but that's just a number I'm throwing out.
I guess I was thinking 12 as well, because that gives you a fair amount of time to research your options, figure it out, multiple pricing.
The only reason I was thinking 18 was because then you would get it in the spring, so you're either getting it in the summer or in the following spring, so it's not over winter.
Chair Rogers, just in terms of, I apologize for interjecting on your deliberations, but the thought was, you know, in terms of discussions with the applicants about, okay, is there an alternative here, and could we ask for that? I know you're saying 12 to 18 months, and the suggestion would be 18 months to two years, only because they feel that at that point, they have two twins, two years old, they'd be old enough, they wouldn't have to have the added expense of putting the enclosure around the air conditioning condensing units, and because of their age, they'd be older, it wouldn't be as much of an issue, as well as the fact that if they had to replace the bigger one, it'd be a smaller unit as they are now. So that would be the applicant's suggestion, if you could give them up to two years to do it.
All right, thank you.
I was thinking two years myself.
I don't take exception to two years.
I'm kind of wary to go to two years, simply because it's kind of lengthening this whole thing out, and I have the feeling that this is going to go somewhere after here. I have the feeling that we're just making a transcript for somebody else. So with that being said, I would be fine to say 18 months, since we had suggested 12 to 18, the applicant had said 18 to 24. So I think if we say 18, at least then we've shown that we are willing to give some level of leniency in order to correct the situation. But again, I don't necessarily want this to be an ongoing thing.
I will just add that, having almost four-year-old twins myself, that there's really no time limit on sticking sticks into fans. But good luck with that.
All right. So with that discussion, is there a motion, please?
I move in the matter, 13ZMJV0093, 1311 Elmwood Avenue, that we deny the request for major zoning relief. However, we allow the current owners a maximum of 18 months to replace those, to relocate those units into a compliant location.
Second motion, oh.
So I have a motion, a second, from Ms. Weinberg.
Either one.
Okay. So we have a motion before us to deny the request with the condition being placed that they have 18 months to bring the units into compliance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? With that being said, therefore, aye votes, which means that the denial with the condition has been passed, and therefore, you'll need to speak with zoning staff to sort of make whatever arrangements need to be made.
Please.
Thank you. Our second case on the docket for this evening is 3110 Thayer Street. If you could please read that into the record, Melissa.
Amy and Nick Long, property owners, apply for major zoning relief to construct a one-story addition. The applicants request a building lot coverage of 32.9%, where a maximum 30% is allowed, zoning code section 6827, and a rear yard setback of 2.9 feet, where a minimum 30 feet is required, zoning code section 6828A4. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include letter requesting continuance, variance application submitted September 17, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated May 9, 2013, site plan, elevations, zoning map of property, aerial view of property, image of property, Spark meeting minutes of October 23, 2013, letters of support, and two additional letters of support that were passed out at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you. I know we have the issue of a letter of continuance before us. It would be my preference, and I'm hoping that the rest of the board concurs, that we allow for testimony to be presented by the applicant in the case, so that if any additional issues come up, that that gives both the applicant and the other party time to resolve those issues, find answers to those issues, before we would have to continue it to a third meeting. So I'm not going to ask for a motion of continuance unless somebody on the board feels differently.
Just so I understand, the motion for continuance is just for-
It's from one of the neighbors.
From, for rebuttal.
Right.
Yeah, I have no problem with moving forward.
All right. So with that, we will go ahead and hear this case this evening with the knowledge that there will most likely be a continuance at the end of it, and which both parties then will have time to gather additional information or hopefully resolve it and not have to come back to us.
Right, so just to be clear, we're not saying that we're not granting a continuance. We're saying that we're going to hear what we're going to hear tonight, and then-
And then we will grant the continuance if council still requests it. So with that being said, anybody who wishes to testify on the matter of 3110 Thayer Street, if I could please swear you in at this time, if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth during your testimony before us this evening?
I do.
Thank you. And if you could please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nick Long, I live at 3110 Thayer in Evanston.
All right, and if you could tell us about your project, please.
Sure, I'll sum it up. Obviously, you've seen the packet. We're basically looking to make a small addition that fundamentally moves a bathroom that is basically in the middle of our kitchen right now, and will also give us a functional back door and gives us a small mudroom. Our house is an existing non-conforming situation, and as we've looked at, our understanding is that any addition requires at least some level of a variance. As we see it, we need two variances. The first, as you mentioned, was the, and I'll let you record that in or through your process.
Just for the record, we are receiving a packet of information that contains several photos of the property. If you could make sure that Mr. Engelmann also gets a copy. This appears to be a set of 12 different photos. Were these photos taken by you?
My wife, Amy.
Okay, and when were these photos taken?
Over the weekend.
And do they accurately represent the condition of the property at that time?
Yes.
Thank you. Continue, please.
Thank you. So we, as we understand it, need two variances, one being the lot coverage going to 32.9% versus 30%, which we actually understand to be a minor variance, and then the rear yard setback going from 9.9 feet to 2.9 feet, which is really why we're here before you today. You know, the purpose, as we see it, would be to give ourselves a functional kitchen, a functional back door, access to the side yard. If you look at page four of the pictures, you can see that the bathroom and kitchen door, excuse me, the bathroom and the back doors run into each other, and it also gives you a perspective on the proximity of the bathrooms, actually a powder room, to the kitchen itself. And we chose this location because the space is already relatively useless on the back. There are pictures on page three that can show you that there is a cement pad occupying much of the space where the proposed addition would be. We don't really see this as usable space right now. There are trashcans behind the fence, the neighbors have a detached garage on the other side of the fence in their side yard, and there is noise from the alley, which is, you know, we view as understandable, it's part of the deal. And we didn't create these issues, you know, it was as we bought the house in 2004. There have been no expansions to the house since it was built in 1927. You know, you have the dimensions of the lot in your packet, it's a small overall lot, 60 feet deep by 72 feet long. The house is setback 25 feet from the street, and therefore, as, you know, we kind of did our rough numbers, we showed that it might lead to a five-foot of conforming house depth, which would be a little small for pretty much anyone. Questions?
So currently, the space between the house, the back of the house and the neighbor's fence is just shy of 10 feet.
That is correct.
And you're proposing to go to just shy of three feet?
Yes. Two feet, I actually did the calculation, two feet, 10 and 3/4 inches.
I'm assuming this went through Spark, and that there were no questions on fire safety issues, trying to get in from the public alley that way, in something that's only less than three feet wide?
There were no concerns raised. As part of the building permit process, they would be required to meet all building codes as well as fire safety codes.
Do we know, is that a fire safety code, or what do they require?
It's just a matter of, the firemen have issues with how they lay their hoses around the house, but if they didn't take exception, they'd probably be okay.
Okay. Yes, if you could repeat your-
If the building code wouldn't have any stipulations, if the fire department didn't take exception, then it's fine.
I believe a neighbor, wife, friend, architect, I didn't guess that. Please come up and, if you would state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Diane Keon, and I'm the architect for 3110 Thayer Street. I also live at 3115 Thayer Street, which is across the street and west of the alley. I just wanted to clarify a few things on the positioning of the house on the site. When they bought the house in 2004, the old survey shows over 10 feet from the southwest corner. The building is not parallel to that rear lot line, so it tapers, you know, there's more distance as you go east. So the tightest condition on the original survey was over 10 feet, like 10 feet, almost two inches. The new survey we got, which we wanted to get because we know with an addition we want topographical information, shows a 9.9, they don't actually, you know, stake the backs of houses, they do the fronts to the house corners, but they show, when you do the math, it's a 9.98, and it's wider, again, it tapers wider to the east. So I use that in our calculations for zoning, just to be conservative in the most governing restrictive dimension. However, if you look at the plat, I'm using the dimension that's further to the alley. If you use the house dimensions and the dimension from the vestibule to the street, you're over 10. So in a nutshell, I'm saying 9.98 feet is 2 feet 11 and 3/4. In that worst-case scenario with, you know, surveys that aren't truly staked from the back, I think we're comfortably over 10 feet, but we're using the, you know, 9.98 just to be safe.
Okay.
Our assumption is, you know, we build a seven-foot addition and the concrete work would be poured at seven feet clear. Did you need to say anymore before? Should I go through, or just, should I go through everything now that I need to say?
Yeah, if you, I don't, we can always come back to Mr. Long if there's questions that arise.
Okay. I guess when I was approached to improve this property, the main governing aspect of program piece of the project was removing this carbuncle powder room in the kitchen that took up, you know, one quarter of the space. And unique conditions and challenges on the site from an architect's point of view were obviously the proportion of the lot. You know, it is, you know, it's 72 feet wide, 60 feet deep, the house is set fairly deep on the lot. This is a unique condition and requires zoning relief in order to do really anything to the home. The house is positioned very close to the rear of the shallow lot. Most of the house now, as it exists, encroaches in the rear yard setback, and I think you can see that from the plans. The house cannot be expanded functionally without doing, you know, getting some kind of granted variation. This is a graphic that shows if we truly went without a variation, you'd have a house that's three feet wide. You know, I mean, we're 20, 30-foot rear yard setback, 27 in the front, that leaves us three more feet, so it's just a very, this truly shows a unique condition for a site. There are two single-family homes which abut the property, one to the east, 3100 Thayer Street, that's the corner house, and then there's 2706 Lawn- And then there's 2706 Lawndale to the south. The public alley is 16 feet wide to the west. Due to the unique condition of this property, there is only the 10 feet to the rear property line from the principal building. The area adjacent to the garages is the rear yard of this property. It's not a very desirable space to enjoy the outdoors. It's always in shade. It's not a comfortable, you know, we kind of want to, we feel more comfortable building in that direction to make it interior space and more usable. And the home currently has a one-car garage attached on the west side of the house towards the alley. There's really no other location to build a detached garage or provide any off-street parking. Typically, there's two required for Evanston, and, you know, we're lucky to have this one. We'd hate to give it up and, you know, take that space from the garage and make that habitable space. So that says again, you know, going to the rear is justifiable. One benefit, I think, of the existing house's location is that it is close to the alley, and it leaves a lot of nice open space between the corner house and this property. It's a beautiful, open, green space, and we'd like to provide access from their addition to that existing side yard. We are proposing a one-story rear yard addition that does not extend any farther east than at the existing two-story portion of this house. The floor plate for this existing two-story is roughly 750 square feet. It's rather small, and we'd like to keep that open space on the east. This will maintain the existing space. The rear addition will not be visible from the street. It will preserve the present physical character of the neighborhood and maintain the existing streetscape and context. The relief we are asking for is to build a seven-foot addition within the rear yard, three feet from the property line. Programmatically, the, you know, owners asked about relocating the powder room and expanding the kitchen to improve circulation and usability, provide a mudroom and usable rear entry that would be access from the alley, and also provide access to the side, east side yard, directly from the living room and from the new kitchen. The interior of this home was also unique for me as an architect. Unlike many other center-entry colonials that have the dining room and living room on each side and the stair in the middle, this stair is parallel to the rear of the house. And it is a stair that goes to the basement and a stair to the second floor. It's really hard to relocate a stair. So we need an addition that is wide enough that can incorporate not only program but circulation. The proposed addition at seven feet in width will address these modest requirements. This, again, would give us a three-foot setback as needed to do this. The one-story addition will continue the height, roof form, and detailing of the existing garage. That'll just simply wrap around the rear of the house. And it is similar in scale to the adjacent detached garages that are along the alley going south. Although the expansion is modest in scale, considering the limitations of the site, it does meet my client's needs, and I believe it will be a positive addition to the neighborhood. And that's all I have.
I have a question for staff here. On the requested variations, we have under number three the request for the air conditioning equipment to be located near the lot line on the alley side, and there's a maximum impervious surface. Are those no longer at play?
Those are no longer applicable. The impervious surface variance that's noted on there was originally due to an inaccurate staff zoning analysis. So that is not needed. And the air conditioning variance is also not needed because the air conditioner, the proposed air conditioner is located next to an alley. It is allowed to have a, I believe, three-foot setback so long as it is within two feet of the house and it is screened, which the applicant has said it will be.
Okay.
But it's not three feet? Is it three feet or screened? Or is it three feet and screened? Because you've only got 511 from lot line to garage.
I'm sorry, there is not any specified setback to an alley-side property line so long as it is screened and within two feet of the principal structure. So it is within a compliant location.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Long, do you have anything else to add? Or if not, I'm going to see if there's questions from the board.
I have nothing to add at this point. Certainly want to be able to answer any questions or when it gets technical, defer to the architects.
I have a couple of questions. The first is, right, so you were here for the other, for the AC unit. So you heard that my primary concern is always the minimum change necessary.
Right.
So I see some... Your proposed building lot coverage, you are slightly over. And it seems like there is room for you to be able to tighten up the floor plan so as to not have to ask for that variance. Did you guys consider that?
I'm not entirely clear what you mean by tightening up the floor plan.
The building lot coverage is a certain amount of floor area relative to the lot area.
Right.
So the floor plan as designed seems as though there's some space in it that could come out such that you wouldn't have as much floor area, and then you would meet the building lot coverage requirements.
Right. We looked at a variety of options. You know, we do have a porch, for instance, on the east side of the house. And, you know, that would involve likely changing the street view. It would also have a significant impact with respect to moving plumbing. There's no plumbing on that side, which obviously, you know, we need for a kitchen. That obviously would address, I think, your question of the...
I think, I think I'm more, thinking more specifically about the area to the, is north up? Yep. To the east side of the powder room. Like, I get that there's a hallway out because you want to be able to access that side yard. Get that. But it seems like you can get that door to fit in that hallway without needing that extra feet, five feet. And wouldn't that then bring down your building lot coverage?
There's stairs to the east, to the basement.
So you're saying that this is a dual access down to the basement?
There's, yeah, there's the...
Is that what's going on?
If you're looking south towards the door out to the south side of the property, of the house, to the right is the bathroom door, and to the left is the door to the basement.
But the stairs to the basement enter from the kitchen, correct?
They're opposite the powder room. The powder room is in the kitchen. It's a box out within the kitchen.
Right. So it's that east wall, it's the east wall of the addition that has a door and a, it has a pair of doors. So if you take that pair of doors and move it to the east wall of the powder room?
What it appears, what it appears is that you're adding a, an access to the stairs to the upper level.
Yes, I was thinking about the powder room. Yes, we would add, you know, the proposed addition would have, so as you walk to those stairs that go upstairs, and maybe it's best if I just approach and...
So what you're trying to do is access your stairs to go upstairs, both from the backside and the living room?
We want to be able to have, when they're entertaining, people from the living room can go to the outside, side yard, and also from the working kitchen. So that stair, the reason we need the minor, it's a minor variation, if I'm correct, the 32.9 lot coverage. I, it, the stair from the living room, you know, you access the stair to the second floor as well as the new hallway that will take you to the side yard.
You step up and over on both sides.
So it's just a one step up. Yes. And that's kind of the beauty of the flow of this. Right now, it's a horseshoe, and it's a complete drag to have this dead-end, dead-end thing going on. We're really trying to, with a modest addition, improve the flow and sequences of the spaces in the interior.
I would also note, this is a super, super substandard lot. You know, we're talking, what is it, 72 by 60? And that's a teensy one.
I'll tell you, it doesn't feel small until you work on the project because it's such a, it's a very beautiful home in the neighborhood, and you don't, you don't sense that until you're really working on it.
And trying to fit in setbacks.
Did you guys also look at other options for a location of the powder room? For example, taking space from the garage or, and potentially moving the garage forward?
Do you want to answer that?
Well, we certainly, like I said, having a one-car attached garage, I mean, having a detached garage is a luxury these days, and we can never get that here. We'd really hate to relinquish space in the garage. We'd like to maintain one off-street parking spot. You know, we certainly, going east is a detriment, I think, to the context of the neighborhood. It's, this is kind of as small as it can really get unless, you know, unless we relinquish the garage. But I think that could take value away from the property as well, where what we have now adds value.
We've had competitions the other way where zoning requires you to have an off-street parking.
Yeah, no, no, I totally agree with that. I'm just saying, just instead of pushing the addition towards the adjacent neighbor, right, where you've got a tight situation, to take that space and potentially push north instead?
It's actually deceiving, but the corner of the sunroom, the existing sunroom, if you look at the south-east corner, is closer to the neighboring properties than this new corner. This new corner is not closer to any neighbor.
To the house.
As far as the house, to the house. It's closer to the property line. But it is not closer to the habitable spaces of the home. I know that's deceptive, but it's just...
No, no, I understand, I understand that. But it's still, you know, it's two foot 11 off the property line. That's really close.
Well, it's over, it's over three, it's two feet 11 and 3/4. It might even be over three with the right surveys. But it actually is over three feet as you get to the east with the taper.
Other questions? I have just one question. How many bedrooms is the house?
Three.
Okay, thank you. With that, is there anybody who wishes to speak in support of this project who came out this evening? I see one hand up in the back. If you'd like to step up and give us your name and address, please. And then we'll take your statement.
Sure. My name is Henry Binswanger. I'm at 3100 Thayer Street. If you refer back to the package given to you by the Longs, on the first page, if you look at the bottom picture, that's, that's my house directly to the east. And on the second page, it would be the same.
So you are located right on the corner of...
Thayer and Lawndale.
Thayer and Lawndale, okay, thank you.
You know, we've seen the proposed plans. We would view that from our west, the west side of our second floor. The first floor, because of the fence, you wouldn't see it anyway. And we really have no objection to what the Longs are proposing. We've been in their house, and they are cramped for space. It's an awkward space in the back. Exactly how it fits in with the seven criteria for zoning, that I can't say. But I can say, as the neighboring house, probably the closest to the Longs, that we would have no objection to what they're proposing.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Binswager?
Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. Anyone else who wishes to speak in support of this project? If not, we will take statements from anybody who wishes to speak in opposition of the project other than Mr. Edelman for right now. Seeing no one has shown up from that, I know Mr. Edelman has, Engelmann, I'm sorry, has requested a continuance. So if you'd like to come up and just sort of state any additional information you would like to have for the next meeting, any questions you might have that would need to be answered?
Steve Engelmann, I'm the attorney for Mr. and Mrs. Delara... Excuse me, Mr. and Mrs. Delara, who live at the adjacent property.
What's the address?
77, 2706 Lawndale. I am requesting a continuance. I don't have any specific information. I would ask only that the packets of documents that were tendered this evening by the applicant, if I could get a copy of those from staff also.
I'm sure we can make that available to you.
I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. I would request a continuance till the next regularly scheduled meeting.
All right. With that, it is customary for us to grant continuances when requested so that additional information can be gathered so additional discussion can occur. Is there a motion to continue this matter? It would be to our meeting on the 19th? So it would be to our meeting on the 19th?
Moving the matter of 13ZMJV-0104, 3110 Thayer Street, do we continue this until our next meeting on November 19th?
It has been moved.
And seconded the motion?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Therefore, this matter will be continued until our meeting on the 19th. Yes, Mr. Long?
Curious what the process is. And the reason I'm asking is, we submitted the plans, you know, a little over six, or the application a little over six weeks ago, notified our neighbors starting within three days of that. And, you know, so we've, you know, it's gone through the process. And I travel, I'm a management consultant, so I travel, you know, a considerable amount for work. And so being around on a Tuesday night can be a challenge. I want to be here for these discussions. And so I'm already working on planning out, you know, the 19th, if I have the date correct. So I'm curious also what the process is. Do I need to be thinking about a subsequent meeting or a subsequent meeting? How does that work?
Typically, the way it works is that any neighbor within 500 feet, we will automatically grant one continuance to so that they can gather whatever information they need. Sometimes information is shared in this packet that they have not seen. It gives them a chance to do some research. Sometimes they acquire an attorney in the meantime. So what will happen in that next meeting is that we will have Mr. Engelmann return. He will present his side of whatever is going on, why there is an opposition to this project. And then you will have an opportunity to rebut anything that he says. And so we will ask you, not necessarily to have to gather any new information, produce any more paperwork. It's really giving them an opportunity to do what they need to do so that they're fully aware of what the project is.
Sure. And then what happens after that? So we do that on the 19th?
So on the 19th, then, we will render a decision based off of what information has been presented by you, what information Mr. Engelmann has presented. And then we will render a decision one way or another based on that, at that time.
Sounds good.
Do you want to tell them about the possibility of an, of a non... Yes, a non-guarm vote? A vote that doesn't have enough people to make?
I understand.
Yeah, sorry. I lost my mind.
It is a possibility, yes. I should say, a decision will be made assuming you acquire four votes one way or the other in the case.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to our third case, which is going to be 2800 Central Street. If you could read that into the record, please.
David Lance Lassie applies for a special use permit for a commercial indoor recreation facility at 2800 Central Street. 2800 Central Street is located in the B1A Business District and the OCSC Central Street Corridor Overlay District, which requires a special use permit for commercial indoor recreation facilities to operate. Zoning Code Section 6953. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include: Special use application submitted October 3, 2013; Standards Form; zoning analysis; business statement; Plat of Survey dated August 19, 1976; Floor Plan; image of property; zoning map of property; and Spark Meeting Minutes of October 16, 2013.
All right. The applicant is here. At this point, if I could have anybody who wishes to testify to us in this matter, please be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be truthful in this case? Thank you. At this point, if the applicant would like to come forward, please, and tell us about their project.
We are proposing to open up a...
If you could state your name, please, and address for the record.
Oh, sorry, David Lance, the applicant, David Lance, of Orange Theory Fitness. We are proposing to put in a group personal training studio at 2800 Central Street. It's an interval-based training system that everybody wears a heart rate monitor, and half of the class is doing cardio, half of the class is doing weight resistance training. And then you switch halfway through, and it's a results-oriented, science-based workout session. So, and that's the basic business model. I know there was a letter that was in there as far as what the, what the rest of it was, and I can share with you more if you, if you like, but... but.
What improvements or build-outs, et cetera, like that, will be done on the property? Will it be basically as it stands now?
Well, we will actually be relocating a bathroom, adding a shower into there, painting it, making it look nicer, I mean, because it's in pretty rough shape right now. You know, and the floor plan is in there, you know, new electric service, you know, or at least new electric wiring throughout the place. We're going to add another air conditioning system to the rooftop unit, or to the roof that's there now.
And question for staff. What is currently in this location?
It's been a series of restaurants, I think.
Well, I didn't know if there was?
It used to be the Blockbuster.
Yeah, it was a Blockbuster.
I know it had several.
I think it was a great frame up, but I didn't know what they moved next door.
It was most recently a little cafe.
Central Cafe or something.
Yeah.
Central Street Cafe, yeah.
Okay.
But it's just that one building. It's not the seven eleven or whatever that convenience store is.
Just the one building, yes.
So I'm curious, right, about the parking, right? There's not a ton of parking. At five o'clock in the morning, I'm sure there's ample parking. At five o'clock in the afternoon, perhaps not. So talk to me about that, please.
That was obviously something that we thought about also, but Orange Theory Fitness is, most of the members for these mature studios are within one mile. So a lot of people do ride their bikes and whatnot. We also have a kind of an inverse parking relationship, where we are early morning, or we are later evening. I've sat there for days and days and days and looked at the parking and taken pictures and just, you know, to make sure that, because for my business model, I need to make sure that there is enough parking. And there seems to always be ample parking. And a lot of people will bike to the place, a lot will walk to the place, a lot of mid-afternoon business people will come and walk at their lunch hour and take it. So as far as the parking goes, I don't, I'm not worried about it at all, as far as, you know, because of also the fact that it is the early morning classes, and it is the later evening classes, which are not, it's kind of like the inverse parking relationship, like the middle of the day when we are not busier, you know, that might be when Central Street might be more busy with cars. But even then, there seems to be ample parking.
And did I hear you say a mature studio? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, I'm based on, oh, I'm sorry, this is a franchise. There are fifty-five-ish locations open nationwide now. There's a hundred and ninety in development. Currently in Chicagoland area, there's one in Naperville and Orland Park. Hensdale and Wheaton are under development. I'm working on Evanston and others in the area, but those are yet to be determined. So there probably will be twenty to thirty of them in the Chicagoland area when it's all said and done the next five years.
So when you say mature, you don't, that's not specifically your demographic?
No. So when I say a mature studio, I mean a studio that's been open for a while. Yeah, exactly. You're right.
Are you, is this a franchise?
Yes.
Then, and do you own any other similar businesses or businesses within this franchise, or is this the first one for you?
This is my first franchise with this company. This is not my first franchise. This is my first franchise with this company. This is the only franchise that I have currently.
Okay. And was the other franchise in a similar type of industry, or something different?
No, my last franchise was a contracting franchise in New York.
Okay, thank you. And how many employees are you expecting to have working at various points during the day? I'm sure as it gets busier, you'll probably have more.
Most of the time, three to four. And there might be occasions where there might be five, there might be occasions where it might be two, but usually, three to four is what it would be.
And do you have leased parking for these employees on the property, or where will they be parking?
We currently have six spots on the lot.
And are those specifically for employees, or are those the six that are assigned to your business?
It just remains to be seen who would actually park there, because a lot of the employees, once again, will hopefully live close enough that they're, you know, able to have alternate means of transportation if necessary.
I don't think there's anywhere near there that you can lease parking.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
There is no, there's no choice.
Yeah.
If they're not parking, and they're not going to park on the street, they're going to park in the neighborhood.
Right. Typically, one of the conditions that we place, just so you kind of know what we're talking about, is we try to keep employees of various businesses from taking up residential parking during the day, so that you don't have somebody who's parked on a residential street for eight hours at a time, therefore, holding up a space for one of the residents in the neighborhood. So we usually try to make arrangements for some sort of off-street parking for anybody who's an employee of any special use that we hear.
Yeah, something I'd be more than willing to look into. I mean, I have not looked into it yet, because, but I can look into and see if there's anybody around that has spaces for lease.
The only thing I can think of are those condo buildings further west that have ample parking.
How many parking spaces are on the property? Do you know?
Six.
So you have all six of the spaces that are there?
Yes.
Six or five?
There are six painted spots, and there's one spot in front of the building.
And can you explain a little bit about what you're going to do to the outside? Are you doing anything to the outside?
Well, new signage, which we've already applied for permits for, so instead of saying Central Street Cafe, it'll say Orange Theory Fitness.
Okay.
As of right now, that's all that's planned.
Okay.
And then I'm noticing that, according to discussion at Spark, you are projecting hours from five AM to nine PM, possibly going later by starting your last class at nine PM. So I'm guessing till about ten PM, ten thirty?
It would not be past ten.
Okay. And you intend to work so that, one of the things that we have heard before is any music that is being generated from inside, any amplification of voices, things like that, will all be contained within the building and will not affect neighboring businesses or any residential in the area?
It should not, because it is a standalone building. So it's not, music is not so loud that you would hear it, you know, if there was an adjacent property, there are sound things that you can do as far as, like, you know, if you're right next door to a, you know, a yoga studio or something like that, like, needs more quiet, then you can put sound attenuation on the wall. But we do not have any adjacent properties, because it is a standalone building.
Okay.
But you know that across the street, there is a yoga studio.
Yeah, I know.
And addressing that, are there windows that are openable, or is it all contained?
No, well, I don't know if they are openable, but they will not be open.
Okay.
I don't believe they are openable.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Lance? If not, is there anybody else here who wish to speak to us? I saw a couple of hands go up. Ma'am, if you'd like to come up and give us your name and address?
My name is Jane Hager. I live at twenty-seven twenty-five Harrison Street. The back of our property is within five hundred feet. We have lived there for fifty years. And we're very familiar with the changes and non-changes that have taken place in that neighborhood. The restaurant was, frankly, a pretty good addition to the neighborhood. It didn't have enough parking, but there weren't people fighting for spaces when it was a restaurant. I don't feel this is a good fit in our neighborhood, and it has to do with the hours of operation and with the parking. We already have people parking in our block of Harrison Street who work in Central Street businesses. And sometimes we find it difficult to park in front of our own home because of this. I'm in decent shape physically, but we are both in our seventies, and my husband has had two knee replacements and a hip replacement. He has some other medical conditions that it would be hard for him to walk even half a block from our house to park. I don't feel that that parking of six spaces is adequate. And incidentally, I think the sixth space happens to be a bus stop. So I think there are five spaces. And when I count the number of treadmills and rollers, one's ten, one's twelve, if people drive, where are they going to park? I don't want them parking on my street and making problems for access to my home. I would, I would see possibly a parking district in which all of the people in a couple of blocks on Harrison Street would have stickers for their cars, and signage would be placed on the streets, and we would all have guest permits for parking, so that there would not be any parking allowed on those two blocks of Harrison, and also on Ewing there for two blocks, except for residents. But to me, that would be kind of a very last-ditch kind of compromise. And I really feel very strongly that with hours of this business, and I frankly, from the people I know in the neighborhood, I don't see them going there. It's, I think it would draw from outside of our area, which means that people will not bike there. They will drive. I'm very concerned about that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. A quick question for Mr. Lance. How many people will be participating in a class at one time? You said that they kind of switch in the middle. Does that mean you have twenty people, so every piece of equipment is used, and then everybody switches? Or is it ten people, and they go back and forth? Or how does that work?
You can have that many people on both of them, and they can switch.
So you could have twenty-two people or something like that?
Yes, you could. I know that, I understand that the parking concerns are there, and, you know, I'm fully aware of that. I mean, I would support, you know, parking stickers in the other areas and whatnot. And I can tell you that I would, we want to be part of the community, and we will ask our members to use the street parking as much as possible and/or our lot. We want to be a big part of the community, and I have no problem supporting having people parking on and using the meters. That's, I definitely wanted to tell you that I will support that for sure. We want to be a strong part of the community for sure. So if that's what it takes, I mean, if that's a concern, I absolutely agree with you, that they should not park there.
All right. Thank you.
Can I?
I'm sorry.
Can I ask you, are you starting on this topic?
No, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to get the rest of the people who wanted to speak.
Let me ask you a quick question then, while he's up here. So what are your initial projections on membership? And how long until you're at capacity?
I can go based on other studios. I mean, we want to try to open with two hundred members.
Okay.
But, you know, at any one time, there's not going to be two hundred members there. It is a limited number. So there is not, never will be there two hundred people at one time.
Right.
So it is a very, you know, it is a very limited number. So there will not be an overflow of all this parking, because it is a limited number.
And are you offering classes throughout the day, or are you primarily before work and after work?
Primarily before work and after work. And a lot of it is going to depend on what the community really, like, some communities, school starts at eight-thirty, so eight-forty-five start time is a really good one. You know, I know that, like, I know the yoga studio has classes early morning, like, a lot of it depends on what, you know, different communities require different times that are going to be the most popular. But normally, it is three classes in the morning, a lunchtime class, three classes in the evening, somewhere around there, some variation of, you know, and the weekends is not as much, and Friday nights, you know, you probably won't have classes and things like that. But it all depends on the demand.
And your classes on Saturdays and Sundays are, what times?
Mornings.
It's usually, it's like before noon? It's like a five to noon or something?
Yeah, you're not going to, the classes aren't going to start at five o'clock every morning. Maybe on Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, they could. But you'll have some variation as far as when that start time is. On the weekends, you're never probably going to have one that starts at five in the morning, because people want to sleep in on the weekends. And that class would not, would not be one that would be a desired class. So it would be later in the weekends.
But you're also not having classes at three o'clock in the afternoon on Saturday?
We just, there's not, there's not a demand.
Right, there's no demand.
There's no demand for Saturday and Sunday night classes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, if I could go to the gentleman over here, and then I'll come back to you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Constance. I own a property at twenty-eight thirteen Central, which is a fireplace store. Obviously, my concern, as everyone else's, is the parking situation. The employee vote is a concern of mine, okay? The customer counts, as seen here in the drawing, with how many workout stations there are, the concern I have is if we've got a class scheduled at nine o'clock in the morning, and then we have another class that starts when that class finishes, then we've got, in essence, double the amount of people looking for parking places. Okay? We've got the people who are there, and then we've got the people who are coming for the next session. Okay? The problem that I have across the street is that my customers have difficulty now, as it is, finding parking places within a reasonable distance to my store. And any further hardship from that standpoint would adversely affect my business.
And what is, I'm sorry, what was the address of your business again?
Twenty-eight thirteen. It's the fireplace shop.
All right.
Okay. So a lot of the product that we sell is heavy and bulky in nature, requires our people to carry it out to the cars for our customers. Okay? If we wind up with people down the street, it really gets tough, to the point that I doubt that they'll come back. Okay? So I've got a concern from that standpoint. I have a significant concern as far as the weekends, because we do, our predominant amount of our business is done Saturdays and Sundays. Okay? I just think that, I just think it would have to be a perfect world for all of this to work, and I just don't see where that's possible. Okay? For his business plan to be successful, he needs people on those machines. And this is still a driving society. And there's people who are still going to drive their cars there, and there's just no place to park. Okay? So I've got a serious concern relative to that.
All right, thank you. You'll get a moment to respond to anything. I want to get to the woman back here, please, if you would come up and give us your name.
I'm Barb Mitchell. I live at twenty-seven forty Harrison, which is at the corner of Harrison and Ewing. Been there for forty-eight years. And I have a question for you. How many people, or how long do these sessions last? They're all one hour.
Could I get you to come to a microphone, so we can make sure we're picking up your answers?
One hour.
Actually, if you'd like, you can use our little handheld here.
They're one-hour sessions, and they'll have a break in between, so that, your concern of, like, the parking coming right back on top of it, there's a break in between, so that people will leave, and so there's not, like, people waiting to get into spas, so.
So people work?
Workout, it's always in classes?
Always.
If anybody who wants to make a comment, please be at a microphone, because otherwise you won't be picked up.
So you do half an hour with one activity, and then switch to a half an hour, or is it an hour at this activity, and then you switch to the other? You were talking about rowing, and then?
It'll be, the one class will be, each session will be one hour.
And one session means two pieces of equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
Weight training and cardio training.
Okay. There's a problem now with parking, a huge problem. And I know that for the yoga studio, nobody will park on Central Street and pay in the meters. They park on Ewing, they park on Harrison. I very often come home and have no place to park. The people who live in the condos and the apartments on Central Street have one parking spot, most have two cars, and they're also parking in the neighborhood. There is no extra parking.
Once again, most of our classes are early morning and the meters go till 9:00.
Yes, the people...
And then after 6:00, that's when our classes get busy again. And so the meters aren't working at that time, so that...
Right. I understand that. But the people who live in the condos and the apartments who have an extra car to park are parked there all night for maybe two days, three days. There is no extra parking. Just so you're aware of that going into it. And I know that Lisa, who runs the yoga studio, she's put signs up, please park on Ewing so that she's, they're not parking in front of homes. Because on that part of Ewing, there's no homes facing it. They can't find places because it's pulled.
Is there anything else that you would like to add?
No, no. But 22 people coming in for one-hour sessions in the morning, starting at 5:00 in the morning, 5:30, did you say?
Five or 5:30.
Okay.
I mean, there are other businesses that have earlier hours like that though, too.
No, there aren't.
Well, I know the yoga studio has 5:30 hours for sure.
And they're very quiet people, believe me.
We'll try to be quiet. Like I said, we want to be part of the community and be supportive of the community. Like, we're happy to be coming here. And so we will work with the community to try to make sure that we are quiet in the mornings and things like that. I mean, that's, that is my main objective, is to be, I want to sponsor local sports teams, I want to be a part of the community, bring a lot of people to the area. You know, and I know, I realize your concern also, but our busy hours are probably not during your business hours, which is, which is a good thing. Our middle-of-the-day classes are different. And can I ask what your hours of business are?
10:00 and we close at 6:00.
Those are not our peak hours at all. 10:00 to 6:00, you know, we don't have classes in the middle of the day that, you know, for the most part. We may have a lunchtime class. But I believe that our inverse parking relationship that we have should be something that is...
I'm going to, I'm going to kind of move us along. We understand there's a parking issue. And I'm going to, I've noticed that we have a special guest in the audience, and so I'm going to call on him and see if he wants to add anything. Alderman Tendem? I don't know if you, I mean, you don't feel you have to, but I noticed you were here and I thought if there was anything you wanted to, to add to the conversation or to our deliberation, feel free.
Thank you. Mark Tendem, 2448 Lincolnwood Drive, and I'm the alderman of the sixth ward. This is my neighborhood, and I live a bit further down Lincolnwood. But let me first say that I'm having a meeting with Ricky Voss. He's the head of parking here in the city of Evanston. And we are going to discuss the greater problem that has been becoming more apparent along Central Street as far as parking. We have a mix of businesses. We have short-term needs, you know, people parking for an hour or certainly less than two hours. But we also have a lot of daytime parkers who want, you know, they're staffing different businesses in the area that were probably intended to be retail, but nonetheless, they are good businesses that are bringing in a lot of people. So I recognize the bigger problem. I don't know that, I don't know the answer quite yet. We don't have a lot of space. I do think that if you go west-east on Central, there's a lot of free parking on Central Street. It's just a block away. I had the same situation west on Central. Once you get past Central Park or Marcy, it's free all day as well. It's a residential area, but it's not a residential where people use a lot of parking. It's not like a side street. So there are some options if people want to walk. As far as protecting neighborhood parking, we can certainly do resident-only and other restricted. If there's someone who has an issue, a handicap or disability, then we can certainly create a disabled spot. If there's someone who needs, a business that needs pickup and delivery, we could probably enable that, too. So I think we can overcome some of the obstacles here. I'd like to see this business in the neighborhood. I think it would be a huge success. And, you know, I, there are downsides to restaurants, and, you know, one of them was the increase in critters around the area. So I heard a lot about that over the past couple of years. So anyway, I think this can all be worked out, and I will certainly work with both the business and the residents to do that.
Thank you. Anybody who didn't get an opportunity to speak? If not, I'm going to let Mr. Lance sort of do his summation. If there's anything that you would like to add for us to consider, anything you want to do to wrap it up?
Just like I said before, this is a very community-oriented gym. All of our members are going to be right around our studio. So I want to make sure that we work within the community to try to work around those things. And we do have this inverse parking relationship. We are early morning where fortunately, it doesn't, you know, work with your business hours, what are our peak times. So, you know, I'm very sensitive to it and I want to be sensitive to it. And we, I will do everything in my power to suggest to my people that, hey, be respectful of our neighbors. I mean, this is where we live. This is where we work. I mean, like, so, you know, I definitely understand that and we'll, and we'll try to work with everybody on that, so.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close our record and begin our deliberation. Thoughts from the board on anything? I mean, I think this is a difficult situation because of the fact that it, there is no parking. I think that that presents an issue for any business that were to go in there unless it were a business that only had two or three people visiting it at a time.
That's silly. I mean, we've got this business district. What are we supposed to do?
Right.
Are we supposed to have vacant buildings so that I...
It's the charm of...
I feel, I feel encouraged by the fact that the alderman is going to be working with the head of parking for the city in order to try to find resolution to this. He at least is aware of the fact that this could become an issue based on people parking in residential. And I'm sure he will hear from people if indeed that is the case. But I mean, the fact is, Central Street is identified as one of our major business districts, and a business is going to go in there.
Just voted the best neighborhood in America or something, wasn't it? Shopping, business, the combination.
I think it's actually really good. I think it's nice to be able to draw that many people to the neighborhood and get them past all the other small mom-and-pop stores that they potentially didn't know were there. And now they know that are there and then can stop and shop at those as well. So I see that there's a benefit to that. And I do agree, the whole inverse parking relationship, that's definitely the case with working out. I mean, people do it before and after work. It's usually not in the middle of the day. If it's the middle of the day, it's moms who generally, you know, are going to walk there or something like that.
Although I am, I'm sympathetic to hearing from some of the...
I agree with that as well.
That the condo people are hopping on the meter spots as soon as the meters go up. I mean, maybe the meters need to run till 9:00 PM there. I don't know. But all of this is just, all of this is not our purview. That's the problem.
But because of the fact that we are recommending to city council, the fact that any issue that we can bring forward for them to discuss, I think is totally within, because of the fact that if we are recommending bringing a business into this space that's going to bring in additional cars, I think it's also part of our duty to make council aware, and it sounds like they are, at least the individual alderman is, of where we see potential problems with this.
Right. But I guess my point is, is, I mean, any, I'm actually just sitting here trying to think of a business that wouldn't cause the same problems.
Exactly.
I'm having a hard time coming up with something.
It'd be the one that goes out of business.
Right. The restaurant that nobody eats at.
The Blockbuster nobody goes to.
So since we are a recommending body on this particular matter, we do have to go through our standards to see where we net out. So unless anybody has anything additional to add, I'm going to go ahead and begin that. As with the other cases, we have to find that certain standards are met. They are different in terms of a special use than they are when we are asked to determine for a variation. The standards for special use, number one, the requested special use is on the special use listed in the zoning ordinance. We do find that a commercial indoor recreation facility is one of the special uses in the B1A business district, and so therefore, this standard has been met. Number two, the requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. As we have mentioned, this is one of our business districts, so having a business go into a business street makes sense. And therefore, I believe that this, this standard also has been met. The special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. This is one where we've had a lot of our discussion about what effect will this bring onto neighboring side streets in terms of parking. The fact that this is a business district is, lends itself to the fact that there is going to be commercial traffic coming. People will come and park, not necessarily for the entire day, but they will come and spend at least a portion of their day, will be at an hour, an hour and a half at this particular location. And as we heard from the alderman, there are, he is in talks with parking people at the city in order to try to see what can be done to alleviate the impact on the neighborhood. So I feel that this is met or is being met in those ongoing discussions. The requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. I don't feel that bringing in a business such as this is necessarily one that will have a great impact on the neighborhood in terms of property values or obviously, like a restaurant emitting any sort of noxious odors or potentially noxious odors or trash or anything like that. It seems to be a pretty straightforward business where people come in and leave with the exact same equipment. So I feel the standard has been met. Number five, the requested special use can be adequately served by public facilities and services. Again, although there are parking issues along here, this also is a major bus thoroughfare. And so the fact that there are some sort of public facilities coming that way makes sense that this would be a type of business that would be located along here, and we can encourage people who will be attending classes to use whatever means they can to get there other than their individual cars. The requested special use will not cause undue traffic congestion. Again, this being a business district, it accommodates a wide load of traffic. I don't feel that bringing an additional potential 20 people to 22 people in for short periods of time is necessarily going to overtax the, or the traffic situation in this neighborhood. So I feel that standard has been met. Number seven, the requested special use preserves significant historic and architectural resources. I don't believe that this building has any. Not necessarily a slam on the building. Lots of our buildings don't. But, so I believe that that standard has been met. Number nine, the requested special use complies with all other applicable regulations for the districts in which it was located and other applicable ordinances. I don't believe that there is anything that the city requires other than the typical business licensing for this type of a business. And I'm sure that will all be worked out as we go through the process. With that said, is there a, first off, does anybody disagree with anything in the standards?
No.
Hearing nothing, is there a motion for the standards for our recommendation to city council? Taking in note that usually we make recommendations with hours of operation, and in this case, we would also add any condition that in regards to the parking not being on residential streets.
What are, what are our hours proposed?
The hours that were proposed were 5 until 9:00.
10.
10?
10. Last class at 9:00.
I'm sorry. 5 until 10:00, seven days a week. And that doesn't necessarily mean that those are the hours that they will be open. Those are the hours that they are allowed to operate. We always set the wide parameter, and most businesses keep within that and maybe whatever they need to be.
But that's the stuff running.
That's, and that's not something that I have control over. Again, we have the alderman working on trying to alleviate parking situations, and I would encourage you, if you have concerns, to talk to him. With that being said, is there a motion, please?
One second. What do we want to say about parking?
Typically, we make a condition that parking by employees and be not in the residential areas. And I think it would also be prudent in this type of a case to encourage the business not to have any of their clients parking in those areas as well. We've heard testimony that there is free parking that is within walkable distance to the location, and we would ask that the applicant direct people to those areas if necessary.
I move that in the case ZBA 13 ZMJV-0105, 2800 Central Street, that we recommend to the city council that a special use permit be granted for a commercial indoor recreation facility with the following additional recommendations, that the hours of operation be limited to 5:00 AM through 10:00 PM, seven days a week, and that parking by employees and clients be directed away from residential streets whenever possible.
Is there a second? So we have a motion for approval, a recommendation of approval on 2800 Central Street. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Therefore, it will go to city council with a recommendation of four in favor, zero opposed. Good luck with your project, and I think Melissa will make sure to let you know when you're on council, et cetera. And we move to our last case of the evening, which is 2134 Wesley Avenue. If we could please have that read into the record.
Jane Kalbs, architect, applies for major zoning relief to construct an enclosed two-story stair and roofed deck. The applicant requests a street-side yard setback of 3.3 feet where a minimum of 15 feet is required. Zoning code section 6847A2 and 6847C2. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record are variance application submitted September 22nd, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated July 2nd, 2013, site plans, elevations, images of existing porch to be demolished from the applicant, images of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, spark draft meeting minutes of October 23rd, 2013, as well as one letter of support and one image that were submitted, that were passed out at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you. If I could have anybody who wishes to testify in this matter, please raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth during the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. If you could state your name and address, please?
My name is Jane Kalbs. I live and work at 1421 Leonard Place in Evanston.
All right. And if you could please tell us about the project?
Sure. The project scope is the rear stair repair and renovation with the exit door relocation and the second floor conversion of an existing enclosed porch to an open deck. The existing building is a non-conforming building. The ordinance was instated after the building was built. The existing setback, in some cases, is less than five feet on the north boundary of the property. It is a corner lot. The existing stairwell is non-conforming as well in its location. The project details the proposed stairwell, or the existing stairwell is in disrepair due to settling over time and is quite dangerous... due to settling over time and is quite dangerous as a second exit. The proposed design follows the footprint of the existing stair with the exception of moving the exit door from the north side to the rear or west elevation. This allows the owner to access their garage through the, their private yard as opposed to using the public sidewalk to get to the garage. The hardship incurred by complying with this ordinance would require reconfiguration on two floors of the interior living space in order to access the exit stair. There would be a bathroom relocation and a variety of partitions that would need to be relocated.
Is this a two-flat?
Yes.
And the plat says that the old screen porch, the old stair was 7.3 feet. I don't see a dimension on the new one.
We are following the existing footprint.
You're staying within it?
Yes.
Okay.
And the, the porches are no longer screened. They are enclosed.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the back of the house, right?
Yes. And there should be a side or a north
Yeah.
Elevation as well.
Is that this?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the one that was in our packet given to us this evening?
Is there any reason why, sorry, why you can't move this, the three steps up to, to the landing over so it's in a complying, a compliant location?
Without moving the whole, the whole stair hall? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, just those, those three on the exterior. That, that exterior landing on the north side. God, if I'm assuming I'm getting north right.
Nope, it's on the west side.
West.
That's okay, it's late.
There are no air conditioning units nor are they planned this time.
Keep for that clarification.
So in this picture, because the house kind of looks symmetrical in terms of having two little buttouts on it, we are talking about this one?
Nope.
Or this one?
That one.
Okay, that's what I
On the back. And I'm talking about these stairs right there, those three steps up that you've got from the backyard?
Right.
Because technically those need to meet the 15-foot side yard setback as well.
Yes, but wouldn't also the landing there require that as well? The exit door is to the, at the ground level is to the north.
Yeah. But you can't get those, those last three steps inside the building? Is that what you're telling me?
No, that's what we're, that's what we're telling you. Again, because the rise and the run is non-compliant
Okay.
In the existing structure.
So you can't, you just can't get those last three in there?
Right. What's, what, the existing condition is that the landing on the ground floor is non-compliant. So there's actually an ex, the door to the exterior swings into the direction of travel
Okay.
And is not deep enough. So in order to comply with the stair codes, we've got those stairs on the exterior.
Okay. And then on the first floor, it seems like you're making the deck bigger?
Yes, we are.
And you're doing that because?
At the request of the client. The existing footprint of the porch is quite narrow and in terms of making that usable deck in terms of furniture layout, the deck depth was increased or beyond the footprint of the, of the porch. However, that deck is located within the, the sightline of the stairwell. So any neighbor, the neighbor across the street on Leonard Place has recommended that the project proceed because their view would not be any different than what they currently
So there is no proposed change in terms of what the envelope is enclosing the stairs? They are keeping that as is, obviously it's a brick structure part of the house.
Correct. Correct. I think she's shortening it substantially. If you look on that elevation, right, that's the old, the dashed. And that's the height of the new. So she's changing the mass of it in a good way.
Right.
Reducing the degree of nonconformity in the lingo.
Well, you
Really, it's the, it's the street side.
Yeah.
She's changing the street side. It's going to go up at an angle now.
Are there any other questions from the board? Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to us? If not, we will go ahead and begin our deliberation. And general thoughts from board members?
I was going to jump right in. You guys know how I hate a porch that's over the side yard setback. Drives me bananas.
You can go ahead.
But I, yeah, but I have to say that the reduction of the mass on the back of this far outweighs that little deck on the first floor that would normally drive me bananas. So uncharacteristically, I'm for this.
Well, it is nice to note that it's only on the first floor and not on the upper floor as well, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, absolutely.
They've made efforts to kind of work within what is existing and, and somewhat lessen it while not necessarily, while bringing it into code and not necessarily going for a bunch of bells and whistles that some people try to, to get. So it seems to me that we're sort of got a consensus going here, so we will go through our standards. Number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. The only testimony that we've really had to this is that they did mention that they've talked to the neighbor across the street and that they seem to be on board with the project. We don't have anybody here to speak in opposition to it and
We do have a letter. Yeah, the neighbor wrote a letter.
Is that the same neighbor?
Yeah.
Okay.
They, they sent a letter in. It's with the
Yeah, I got it. I just wasn't sure that was the same neighbor. I'm sorry.
Oh.
So we don't have anybody here who seems to be wanting to speak in opposition to this, so I believe this standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. I believe that trying to take non-conforming buildings and at least bring them into code is something that the ordinance is definitely in favor of as well as not having a drastic impact on the green space, the open air, and it doesn't seem that we're going to be really impacting that. So I believe this standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. Again, mentioning the fact that they are working on trying to bring something into compliance with exist, with current code and to update the structure. It seems that the, the condition of the, of the non-conforming use already exists and so I would believe this standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty is distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were carried out. Again, the fact that this is a non-conforming use and they are trying to bring it up to code while improving the safety of the, of the rear stairwell, the enclosed stairwell makes me believe that this standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon the desire to extract additional income from the property. I don't believe this standard really applies here. Having a functioning staircase is not necessarily something people pay more for than opposed to paying for a non-functioning staircase. The alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. This standard is met. Obviously, this condition has existed for some time. And number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified. The fact that, that there is a little bit of an intrusion into the yard, but the fact that we are cutting back on, on mass seems to be sort of a, an equalizer in this case and so I believe this standard has been met. Therefore, I will ask if there is no further discussion or anything anybody wants to add that we have a motion.
I move that in ZBA case 13ZMJV-0106, 2134 Wesley Art, Wesley, excuse me, Wesley Avenue, that we grant major zoning relief for a street side yard setback of 3.3 feet where a minimum of 15 feet is required with the condition that the project move forward in compliance with all testimony and documents presented before us tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, therefore, on 2134 Wesley Avenue approving the requested variation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Therefore, you have four votes and your project can move forward. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
With that, I will note that we have nothing else on the agenda. Are there any comments or things we need to know about?
Just to note that attorney Ken Cox's last day with the city is this coming Thursday and this is his last public meeting.
Oh, dear.
Oh. That's why he's giving everything away. She said you were cleaning your office and I wondered if you were just being like industrious or if there was going to be an announcement of some sort, but thank you for sitting and putting up with us and good luck with your new venture.
Where are you going?
We're the best board around.
Huh? Taking a pie.
Fantastic. I envy you.
Therefore, not being anything else, we stand adjourned.
Thank you so much. Everyone's Thank you. Very patient. Good to see you. Your son, right? Is that Haven or is Yes. Yeah. Eighth grade. Yeah, Aaron's in eighth, in sixth grade now.
We moved. He's so much
We moved. He's so much